Fellas, set. Call meeting, July 13th, meeting of the Brookfield Planning Board is 6:58 PM on Monday. We'll go through our roll call. I'm Tim Strathus. Hey Camo?
Here.
Terry Ward?
Here.
John Mayer?
Here.
Peter Holland?
Here.
Rick Saret?
Rosen.
We do not have any alternates at this time. I have the floor open for public comments. Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to announcements, correspondence, and mail. I have one item here that came in from an email, which is an invoice for the Strasser Regional Planning Commission. Disappointed, has Peter been sworn in?
Yes.
Yes, he has. For the fiscal year 2021 dues, actually remember there was some discussion about whether or not we're continuing with this. They sent the invoice and they asked if we're not going to submit payment, then we need to sign and send this back to them.
That was sent to the selectmen, I think we'll do that tomorrow then.
Okay, so you're gonna sort that out tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay, very good. So I will not worry about that. Thank you. Let's move on to review and possible approval of our minutes from June 8th. Everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes.
Yep.
Excellent. Anybody have a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
Just say what the date was.
June 8th, 2020, I'm sorry, thank you.
So the record.
I appreciate you keeping me on track. No discussion, all those in favor of approving the June 8th, 2020 amendments, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to new business, we have inquiry into building on Class 6 roads, and the Kindles are here to talk with us, and Carden and Curtis said you guys would like to take the floor, and you have time for your presentation. Thank you.
I only have five minutes. So, my brother and I, we're 22, 22 years old, we've lived in Brookfield our entire lives. We'd like to buy property and build a house. It's kind of specifically this piece of property here at the end of Moose Mountain Road, happens to be on a Class 6 road. The point of the property actually touches the Class 5 part of the road, but because it doesn't have 250 feet of frontage on it, on the road, it's not buildable as of now. You go to the next page, the Brookfield has made exceptions in the past, they created a liability waiver to allow people to build on Class 6 roads. And on the next page, it's just a fact sheet of state recommendations on building on a Class 6 road, and in the lower right-hand corner, it gives three recommendations, one of them's the liability waiver, the second one, which is the most important to our case and what we wanted to bring to your attention, is limiting development within a certain distance of a Class 5 road. They give an example of 600 feet. In what we did research on, we only researched at 500 feet. We figured if you could, if there was a lot and you wanted to, extending it to 500 feet from a Class 5 road, we thought 500 feet would be kind of a round number considering that was 250 feet of frontage for a buildable lot, so if you went 500 feet, you could potentially subdivide two lots. So that's why we chose 500 feet and just kind of researched the lots that would be affected by a change like that.
So you're coming to the planning board today because you spoke to the selectmen and you understand that right now in town, it's not permitted to be able to construct on a Class 6 road?
Yeah, we met with the selectmen, and it is not, we can't build on a Class 6 road as of now.
Right, so you're coming to us because you want to see potential zoning change, right, to allow that to happen?
Yes.
Okay.
There's really only five lots that are not buildable right now. I mean, obviously, like you said, we broke it down to all the maps and the lots, as to what could possibly be subdivided off of each one.
Okay, so this packet right here is a packet showing all the Class 6 roads in town, and if we were to-
Extend it five hundred feet.
Extend 500 feet, these would be all the possible buildable lots.
Yes.
Okay. So we're talking, there's quite a few additions to the tax base potentially as far as house lots.
Yes.
Everybody's getting a look at this. So, this is your first step, was to visit with the selectmen and understand what the current rules were and how this would, how your situation would be reflected in trying to get that done. They gave you the advice to come and see us, to talk with us, to determine whether or not the planning board might be interested in looking at a possible zoning change to allow construction on a Class 6 road with limitations.
Yes.
So I think the board members here have been looking over the documentation you've provided, and it's very early for us to make a determination of whether or not we think it's acceptable to do that, but I'm interested to hear from the board members whether or not they think this is something they'd be interested in investigating more. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is that handsome road run right through the middle of all of this?
Yes.
So, may I ask a question too?
Yes.
So this, this is where the proposed house is, right?
Yes.
And so, this is Moose Mountain Road here?
Yes.
And so I know Woodman Hill, I know where that goes off.
Yes.
So, so it's on the left-hand side, actually. Is Trickery Road the one that goes from where?
The parking lot is.
Yeah, you can go around, okay. Okay, cut. How far is it from where the proposed house is to Moose Mountain Road?
We don't have a proposed, I don't know the distance from where we were, the house, but to the driveway would be 100 feet.
Okay, I see that, but, okay, I'm just curious as to how far it was from-
I can get a rough idea.
Okay.
Yeah, just a little background here, the Woodman Hill Road, obviously that's the Class 5 road. Now you have a dot on-
That's the Woodman Hills, that's the Class 6.
That's the Class 6.
It's all, those are all Class 6 roads going around, surrounding the whole property's Class 6. Right at the 100 feet mark there, that's where Moose Mountain Road is.
Okay, so it's all dirt from there, is it just about right?
Yeah, yeah, we measured 100 feet from the dirt where the driveway went into the property.
Well, if the planning board put together ordinance to handle this, this would be, it would have to be pretty comprehensive, because there's some, there's a lot of criteria that you're gonna have to look in, and even if there's a waiver, we'd have to have a step-by-step waiver for each item, because all these are very, you know, oddly shaped and stuff like that, so it'd be a pretty comprehensive ordinance that would then be voted on by the entire town. Do we have any examples of a, of an ordinance like this that's already in existence?
We don't, we would have to do some investigation into that. I do seem to recall reading in the Grand State News a year or so ago about some construction in Wolfborough that occurred on Class 6 roads, that I know that they went back and forth on, so I know there's other towns in the community are having construction occur on Class 6 roads. We just need to do some investigating to determine what that would be.
I mean, I would be in favor of just looking into it, at least gathering information on what other towns have been doing, in this case, still property.
Yep.
I agree.
Good.
You know, I think it's definitely worth looking at, I remember that case in Wolfborough, that went around and around for a long time, I don't know what the final outcome-
I don't either.
But they talked about not being like a fire truck up there, but you know, I'm of the, obviously, the liability, you know, thing is a concern, but if that can be, if we can fulfill, you know, requirement there. I mean, myself, and I'm new to this whole thing, I hate to see somebody have a piece of land that they can't build a house on, you know, especially, you know, someplace like that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know we, I know there's probably gonna be a lot of legal requirements and everything, but I think it's definitely worth going forward and looking into it and making sure we know what's under it.
Mr. Chairman, also because the state already has pretty stringent requirements on septic and setbacks and, and like, Mr. Holland said about the access for liability for fire, I believe the town just passed ordinance forcing everybody, I'm not gonna say forcing, yeah, forcing everybody to have a driveway, so that's already taken care of, so, you know, there should be, it should be easy to come up with something that would handle that, so.
Okay, all right. Terry, you have any thoughts?
So basically, it's just a 100-foot shot of Moose Mountain Road.
Another thing I would say is, you also provided an example of when this was allowed in the past, correct?
Yes.
So how can, how can they be blocked from getting a waiver now if this was already approved?
Because we have a 250-foot requirement to be on a Class 5 road.
Right.
Yes, Rick?
I don't, I don't have the information in front of me, correct me if I'm wrong, after that was passed, the town voted again to not allow construction on Class 6 roads. And all the laws listed on that liability waiver are listed on the warrant article that the town passed, saying no building on Class 6 roads. So that may take that away, yes, Brookfield has allowed building on Class 6 roads per that without liability as of that, 1984, but it was somewhere in the early 90s, I think, that they went ahead and voted on a warrant article at the town meeting and said, no building on Class 6 roads. So, that's the sticking point, is how do we get back to this, building allowed on Class 6 roads, limit the liability, or just turn Class 6 roads into Class 5, I don't know.
No.
That's what we gotta look into.
No, no ordinance ever been proposed to take care of everything, you know, checklist or other waivers, that's never happened before. So if we did come up with that ordinance for houses, how would it feel different? If we had a detailed ordinance that you could do this, but you can't do that, and then they would have to vote on it again?
Yep.
So I think that may, it may be an easier, you know-
So '84, they said they could do it, but the town hasn't helped out on it. And then I think it's '92, I'm a little puzzled, I think you guys had it, the ordinance. Was it 2000? I didn't even have the date, but it was after '84.
That, well, the Robinson Road example was, that was just strictly the selectmen allowing it. The house, the house that was built on the Class 6 portion of the road was, that was, the property was sold with the driveway permit, and they said as long as you put the driveway where the permit says, you could build. And it didn't meet the requirements for frontage on a Class 5 road, it didn't have enough, but they allowed it because it did have some frontage. No, I don't think, I don't think, I didn't personally research if it was ever voted on, so I don't know, I can't speak for that. One thing, one thing I would say though, is just to simplify it, I think what we had discussed is making it easier, or making, making a few lots open to a house, and creating a more specific ordinance for it. So, obviously, the big problem would be, you don't want somebody building miles into the woods, because it's not, you're gonna, the town is gonna ultimately probably assume some liability from that, regardless if you sign a waiver, I would think, I would think if it ever went to court, they're gonna say, well, it's still, you know, town road and this and that and the other thing, but if you could contain the development to a limited distance, you know, how bad could the road possibly get from the nearest Class 5 road intersection to, you know, if you went the 500 feet? You know, you're limiting your exposure, I guess is a good word for it, and I think that's really the only, the only change that would be, in my mind, would be made, is just adding an additional requirement to it, instead of saying not at all.
Right, the part, the part that I'm having trouble understanding is, the ordinance now says no building on Class 6 roads. And the question that arises, risen in the past, you know, like you said, when someone builds a mile on a Class 6 road, and suppose they have deep pockets, and they say, well, I'll just turn, I'll improve it to Class 5, write down on my driveway, and the answer's still no, because it's a Class 6 road. Well, maybe the thing to address would be how to turn Class 6 into Class 5.
Well, it's my understanding that if you were to take on the cost of upgrading that road to a Class 5 road, you could meet the requirements if, you know, if the, if the landowner agreed to pay for the upgrade of the road to the town spec, then that would meet the requirement. And I'm assuming like with any town, the town has to accept the road after the fact, has to be inspected, if it's up to the standard and it's, you know, met all the requirements that were agreed upon, it would be up to the town to either accept the road or say, no, it needs to be, this needs to be changed or that needs to be changed.
Right, like two farms, that's a perfectly good road they put in there, and the town will have to vote on whether they'll accept it or not.
Right.
Well, it becomes town maintained too, once it's Class 5, right?
Once it's accepted as a town road.
Right.
Can you add to that, Rich, about the Class 6, the answer being no all the time, or countless of someone wants to improve it?
Well, we always look at the last set of zoning that was approved at the town, so there's a lot of history, but we're governed by the one that's dated 2017, because that's the one that the town said, these are the rules we want to follow. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, there is a lot of history.
Well, in that case though, what is the ruling in 2017 about improving the road?
My opinion?
No, not your opinion, what-
The zoning says it looks like Drew Farm, you can't afford that, that's got a face like this and paved side to side, that's an expensive road, that's what our zoning says approved roads look like, if you wanna approve a road, give it to the town.
Yeah, that's not what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking what the ordinance or what the rule is, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, I'm not asking for your opinion, I'm asking what, because you, you brought it up, that 2017 is what you're governed by, so whatever that rule is, is what we should, what we need to strive for.
And an example of that rule is the Drew Farm Road.
Yes. So it, it has to be paid to the chair.
That's what the document said, because we're never thinking along these lines, we're thinking about a subdivision going yet. Yeah, no, I understand that, but that's what I think the dialogue say, Drew Farm is a great example of what the specs are.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the conversation, your discussion on this right now, because if we're getting into the specifics of exactly how this is gonna, you know, occur, I think, you know, I'm interested, John, if you have any thoughts on this subject before we make a motion to determine whether or not we want to continue investigating this or not?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth researching, like you said, I mean, having a piece of property that you can't build on is kind of cumbersome, and looking into what you would need to do to make the road, you know, adequate for what the town thinks it should be, I don't necessarily think it should be penalized because it's on a Class 6 road at this point, if you can modify the road to get it to where it needs to be.
Rick, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, but I will abstain, because I've already been into discussions on this at the selectment meeting.
Put together a motion?
Well, do we need a motion just to say we're gonna investigate?
Yes.
Okay, then I will motion to investigate the possibility of putting together a comprehensive ordinance to address building on a Class-
6.
6 road.
Any second?
Second.
Any more discussion amongst the board members before we vote?
Yeah, I'd like to go up there and look around too.
You may do that on your own-
Right.
Time.
Yes. If you don't mind.
All right.
Can I make this again?
Yes.
I think it's a zoning change, not a more-
Yes.
I think you're right. I stand corrected.
Yes. So the motion is to investigate whether or not to create new zoning to allow for construction on a Class 6 road. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any? Abstaining?
Abstain.
All right, fellas, thank you. So what we're gonna do now is that you brought us this information, you brought this concern, we're gonna put you on the agenda for the next, August 10th meeting is the next meeting, it's the Monday at 7 o'clock, and it'll become old business, and we'll allot some time to discuss it, we'll do some research amongst the members here, and we ask you also, we've had a good discussion here, and there's different aspects to this that we need to figure out, the road clearly isn't gonna be a big one, and then you brought us with some creative information on the possible lots that, based on distance, that can be included, so I think we'll look at this, and then we'll have a discussion again, and we'll just keep discussing this until we come to a consensus on potential zoning we could put in front of the town. So I will email you with an agenda when it comes out, have your email, and you're free to hang out, and we have some other business items to go through, or, nice evening.
Mr. Chairman, if they aren't gonna be on the agenda, I would encourage them to bring as much information as they can.
Absolutely.
That you can find that, obviously, somewhere else in this state, they must have done this.
Yes.
So you could find that, if you could go there.
All right. Yeah. So we're now a team, so I think that's where it comes to, so we're gonna work, we'll work together to figure out what the limits of this are, so. Great?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. So let's move on to old business. Our first old business item is our senior housing zoning, we spoke, this is one of our items that we discussed at the last meeting, that we're going to investigate for this year. I hope everybody may have had an opportunity to-
I attempted to.
You attempted to?
I didn't have a lot of luck.
Okay.
I know there's one up in Conway, I'm still trying to secure that information.
Okay.
This discussion has a time limit, right?
It does, 15 minutes, I'm sorry, thank you, Rick, for going there. It's been 15 minutes, so it's 7:39, we're gonna move on. So, John, did you have anything at all?
So what I did was, I didn't necessarily find anything on ordinances or anything like that, but I did research a couple of them in Wolfborough, and it kind of ranges widely, I guess, on how they're set up. The one in particular that I guess actually had a website and stuff like that was Sugar Hill. And that one was set up almost like a condo association, where it was a co-op and everybody purchased a property, and I'm assuming they paid some sort of, you know, fee to go towards, I think they had a pool, they had, you know, a dining facility, like a rec area, so I'm assuming their fees went towards that, and the housing prices that I saw ranged from like 207 to 290, I don't know how big they were. And then the other ones were, you know, your stereotypical nursing home type facilities, where a company would own it and then rent out apartments, that's kind of what I saw. And the one in Conway was, I think it was Merriam something, that's owned by the Memorial Hospital, it was set up the same way.
That's great.
So there are different ways we can consider this, set this up, but like a Sugar Hill, full-blown, on your condo or your half-house or whole-house, and be able to, kind of step up into care as needed with a care facility on property, or just the 55 and over housing with no separate facility. So these are different ways that we can think about doing it.
Hey, do you have anything?
Oh yeah, just to recap for the public, so we're talking about creating a zoning ordinance, correct, to allow for either assisted living, senior housing, or 55 and over type town.
Yes, correct.
Which now presently does not exist in Brookfield as an ordinance.
Correct.
As a zoning ordinance. Now, I've said this before, is there a difference between assisted living, senior housing, and 55 and over? Like, are we gonna have to do some type of a layered zoning ordinance? Because they're very different.
Right. So I did find, the state of New Hampshire has a commission for human rights on fair housing for older persons, and I have a copy of it here, there with the state, as far as how you can develop housing for 55 and older, which, people wanna look at. I did manage to find a few zoning ordinances, I found one for, town of Amherst, they have elderly housing section in their zoning, this single or multi-unit residential developments, which comply with the federal definition of elderly housing, is allowed by a conditional use permit, and shall be required to meet any standards set forth in that section subject to the following, each structure may be a single dwelling or a cluster of units containing from two to 12 dwelling units. The project density shall be determined using the base density and bonus density as described in section four point one six. Ancillary facilities such as community meeting rooms, site management offices, and rooms for limited healthcare services are allowed. No structure should construct greater than thirty-five feet. And then setback shall comply with the underlying zoning district. So that's their little brief segment there. The. I did print out something, just kind of goes from our discussion last week, last month, rather, about how seniors are becoming a growing portion of the state housing population. And then the town of Kensington has a zoning ordinance that's fairly comprehensive, which I think Ed speaks to what you're talking about, which is the multiple different levels of housing. They even go into talk about some of it being, you know, based on income, a certain percentage of the price of the community can be related to their fixed income, so.
So they got some of our records.
Yep. But they have, they have kind of a summary here where they say elderly housing shall exceed five percent of total housing stock. No more than eleven units in a single development. Seven hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred square feet. No more than four units per building structure, thirty-five foot height. Hundred feet frontage on existing town road for every parcel. They want fifty percent of the parcel to be conservation area. So. There's some others. And it was kind of interesting in my search, too, because there are quite a few. Quite a few towns had zoning and then in the past five years got rid of it. So I don't know, I didn't dig deep enough to figure out why. I looked at Wolfboro's zoning and I spent a good half hour trying to figure out where they had, because there's several elderly housing units there, but I couldn't find anything. And their zoning about specifically elderly housing, so I may have missed it, but.
Just to recap, you said that this already existed and they got rid of it. What does that mean? They both town voted?
They said right into the zoning and said, you know, removed on a date. And that was it. You know, they had a definition referred to section three dot whatever. And then you went there and I said, on this date it was removed.
She's fine.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. So I think there's. You know, here's one for Exeter, too, from 2017.
These are big towns, though, compared to us. Yeah, I mean, I get that all these other towns have this zoning and stuff, but like Brookfield is a rural, you know, agricultural community. And like I think we had discussed last time, there was a couple of lots already discussed that could be available. I'm not sure how this idea came up for this senior developments or what have you. But to me, it just doesn't seem like Brookfield's a community where this type of thing would fit in. So let's say that, you know, the guy that has a sand bed maybe has lots available. If we allow someone, change the ordinances, allow someone to do this, you know, we're going to have to redo Moose Mountain Road, because Moose Mountain Road is not in great shape at all. I mean, during the winter, I'm surprised cars didn't go off the road in the middle of it, you know? So I'm just, I guess I'm confused as to how this came up. Is it like a point of discussion for future ordinances that we want to put in? Or is someone already talking about, you know, getting into wanting to do that or just how it became up, I guess?
It came up because we have a high percentage of elderly people in the town. And a question has been asked about the availability of senior housing. Because people, they want some houses to leave Alice, but they don't want to leave town. And there's absolutely no place to go out of town. So the number of inquiries we want to explore. And we responded, people slide off the road, they drive up and down, I go on two-wheel drive for fifteen years and haven't come close. And never saw anyone slide off the road, so. I need a lot of.
You disagree with the laws of that shot?
I disagree. I'm dragging up there. I skied there like when that thing first opened. I used to go up there all the time. Anyways, one of the questions I have is, are we talking about over fifty-five housing? Or are we talking about a, basically a living facility that you start out in a, in a single family or in a joint, like a townhouse, and then if your health goes downhill, you move into this kind of a central location where they have a dining room and they have better care facilities? Because those are two different, you know, things. The other thing is, I mean, I'm not that familiar with all the, you know, the laws of Brookfield, but if you have an, if you have an operation as the ladder where you go and you have people taking care of people. I mean, don't we have an ordinance that says you can't have more than one employee or something in the whole town? I mean, you're going to have to employ a staff of people to, you know, to do something like. I'm familiar with the Balders in Exeter and not so much with Sugar Hill, but a little bit with that. But, I mean, those things, those are big operations. That thing in Boulder, I mean, in Exeter, it's huge. Anyways, we have, actually, we had a relative that just, you know, passed away that's been there for like ten or fifteen years. Anyways, I just, I think we need to find out what we're looking for and then, you know, go from there.
Chris?
No, I just wanted to say there's plenty of people that slide off the road. I've been maintaining a good portion of it myself for twenty-two years.
Yes, yes, yes. So I think in some of, I think one of those zone, zoning guidelines that I looked at was talking about location relative to main roads, hospital, grocery, you know, facilities. So I think if there was a zoning for this, then there would have to be something to that effect to prevent a unit being made, you know, put up next to the, you know, up on Stonemore Road, you know, somewhere off, maybe off Tippet Silver Road or something, where now you've got access problems. So, yes, Rick?
Go ahead.
No, I'm good.
The spirit of the thing is the requests have been made and we're only looking to see what would fit in Brookfield. We don't want the town, I don't think we want the town to be six hundred residents and eighteen hundred residential residents. But just what could we do to help the high population of seniors in Brookfield?
So if we.
The answer is nothing. I mean, so.
Well, on that, you know, one of these zones is five percent of the population, so that'd be thirty-five people roughly in town. So could you, because we foresee thirty-five people living in a development, you know?
Well, that's a, that's a good point that they put that in there, because that controlled size is in, prevent the town from becoming a, so. So we just have to, you think about it, what can we do to help the seniors and adults in Brookfield?
So I think this has been a good discussion. I think definitely we all have some views and opinions on what it should look like. So I think maybe what we should do is stop the conversation here, take it up next month, but let's come back to it with a different look of what would this look like in our town? You know, we've brought some examples, we've discussed some other towns here with a much greater population. You know, perhaps we need to conjure up what would it look like in this town to make sense? That would preserve the rural feel that Brookfield is known for without, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all right. I just, you know, are there places in Brookfield that we could, that you could put up multi, you know, over fifty-five housing that had, let me just say twenty units? Is there other places here that would, you know, that would have enough space and have road frontage and everything that we could, that that could happen?
I think there is.
Okay.
Also, maybe to simplify this, maybe the question would be on the ballot to, does the town want the plan much more explored? Maybe we're a little jumping ahead right now.
Did the master plan survey have any questions regarding this?
I believe, I think there was.
Yeah.
So it was at least one comment, I believe.
One. I'm just saying that's a good, could be a good.
Yeah, well, I remember, too, when I was, remember we were up on the stage being questioned for this position? It was asked by two people in the audience about seeing, are we going to look into senior housing? I don't know if you remember.
I read over it in the paper. There was something like that.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of you, Peter.
I'm only seventy-five. You got a long way to go.
All right, so we will take this up next month and continue our discussion and bring some ideas to the table of what you think it should look like. Or maybe to the risk point, maybe we need to think about tabling it and bringing it to the town meeting. So let's think about that. Let's move on to our next old business, which is visiting building codes. But we don't have our CEO here. So we'll table that and move on to the master plan. So I asked the group to review the vision section, which is section two point oh one of the master plan. Which, I don't know if you have a copy. I can hate the copy. Do you have the copy?
Sure.
Yes. First one, you can do it. All right, so we've allowed a half hour for this discussion, although I did not raise it on there. So let's go to E eleven. So I figured first part of the master plan was an introduction, which seems to be the last thing we would have wanted to write at this point. So let's, I figured we'd start at the need of it, which is a vision statement for the town. This is from, obviously, our two thousand six master plan. The vision as stated is a small, historic, rural New Hampshire farming community committed to improving the quality of life for present and future generations. So our purpose of reviewing the master plan is to determine whether or not it's applicable to this day and age that we're in and at the time and then ten years down the road, what we foresee the town shaping into. So I'd like to start the discussion by asking, and I know that Ed and Terry have been through this once before, but we have new members here now.
They still have the corrections in here.
I'm sure you do, yes. Whether or not we feel that the vision statement still holds true today and ten years down the road.
First off, today there are more active farms and agriculture activity in Brookfield than there was in two thousand six. Included value-added agriculture businesses. So that part of the mission statement still remains true.
I asked a question for you about that. How do you, how do you know that that is true? Is there like a collective of the farming community in town that?
Well, yeah, in two thousand six, there was really nothing going on. Moose Mountain was dabbling in it, setting up. I don't recall anything going on with Stoneham Road. The Red Bond didn't have its land cleared out yet. There was nothing really going on there.
Yeah.
And now it's, it's everyone. The, I think both horse farms were empty. So it's, it's empty.
It's at least the same as it was in oh six, at least, or more?
Truthfully, at least. I think it's much more at least.
Yeah, but it's at least, so, so the statement, if it was true then, it's, it should still be true then as a farming community. Or farming is in the community, whether it's a farming community or not.
Right.
I'm not sure about that.
Residents that do not farm have also a crisis. So maybe, maybe in proportion, it's the same.
I was asking the same question you were. I thought, I looked at it and I said, I don't know, I don't know that much, you know, farming going on, agricultural. Maybe I'm just out of the picture. If you count, you know, things like horse farms and things like that, I guess, you know, I guess maybe the picture changes. But I think of agriculture as, you know, as farming crops and whatever. Maybe my definition is not correct.
Well, the cold farming includes weed production, flowers, greenhouses.
Okay.
Now, how does this vision statement not already say that? And since this is an update, do we really need to change the verbiage? I mean, I personally don't like any of the verbiage at all. It doesn't sound like we wrote it. But its intention is, is fine. I'm just saying that it's a huge undertaking to rewrite a master plan. And we're not here to do this because this is just a review.
Right.
So I don't have, I don't have necessarily a problem with the vision statement the way it is. Maybe it could be tightened up. I have more, more problem with the accuracy of some of the other items that are in the master plan. But we're only talking about the vision statement?
We're talking about two point oh one, A through B.
Yeah, and I have a problem with the way it's written, but that's just because the Strategic Planning Commission wrote it for us. So. But basically, a small, historic, rural New Hampshire farming community committed to improving the quality of life for present and future generations is pretty. I mean, I don't, doesn't, to me, it doesn't say anything about Brookfield. I mean, it makes sense the way it's describing it, it just doesn't sound like ours.
Sounds like a region.
Yeah, it just sounds like a temple, if you count the books.
So what is ours?
Well, maybe a rural community, but where farming takes place, but it's certainly not a farming community.
Right. Community of fires.
Let's talk.
And before updating it, how important is it to the board that this be, this vision statement be completely changed? Are we just going to, because if we start rewriting this, you get. I have a yellow on the other side. It should be rewritten, but that means we're going to be rewriting all the planning.
Right.
So.
You have a master plan before this one, the book?
I have, I have our latest one. Was there one before this?
Yeah, there was, I have it at home.
I don't have it with me. The nineteen.
My nephew has one.
How does it compare to this one?
I don't know.
Doesn't have the regional planning board, all the questions on it. Well, last time we went through this, we scratched. Well, the last time we went through this, we scratched out farming, and we changed improving to maintain. And we seemed all be in agreement with that at the time.
Yeah.
So I like to stay with all that update, because...
Yeah.
The only problem I have with this is, I'll stick with your agenda.
No, it's, no, it's, I wanna hear your...
No, I am, I'm gonna stick with the 2.1, the turn of the page here.
Yes.
What I have a problem with some of this verbiage is when it says recreation, it says provide residents. When it says provide, that means you're telling people that everybody's gotta be taxed more to provide something. I don't like those words that, that say provide. There's another provide, "Provide all residents with quality town services." I don't know, I just, I don't like those words.
But provide also mean that, that's something that you work towards. Does it necessarily mean?
It says "Provide residents with a reasonable level of recreational services." That's not just a suggestion. To me, it's my opinion.
And that ties into the creation of Moose Mountain as a recreation area. Same type of thing.
Okay, talk about Little League baseball and P B football programs?
Is, is it appropriate, are we to comment?
Yes, you can comment.
Well, there's two options for sports, Wakefield and Wolfboro, so technically, you're providing that by having a government here. Because, and I, I would say, the term providing, I don't like it either, but what, what's the purpose of the town government if it's not to?
Provide.
Provide. I mean, you know...
Comment on that.
I mean, just in simple terms, I, you know, there's no need to dig too deep here, but, you know. One interesting thing I, I, I find is the term provide exists here, but under transportation, the term encourage is used. And it seems to me those two should be opposite. The maintaining roads is definitely something the town has to provide, not encourage.
Right, something they ought to do.
Yes.
But I agree with him, that word provide is given, the town has to give, except one of these. So encourage would be, that's a good word for it.
We just changed all the provides.
Oh, I think that was provided.
Town access to King of the Lake probably pulled out, unless there is one. Person will search and look that down.
Is that, is this, is this the one?
It is. Number nine is, which... That was a hot topic in the survey. You know.
Is there like no public land on that lake, or is there no one with enough land that would give an easement or something like that?
By understanding, is the state has a piece of property on the lake?
There's actually three pieces of property on the lake. One of them happens to be the island. And there's one off of Cape, there's two off of Cape Road, but one is up the middle of a point that has no access to it. And the other one's right off of Cape Road, and that's what the big discussion was, at the town meeting.
Yes.
It's in between two houses, huh?
Well, it's, it's, it's like a .19 acre point in, you know, and, and it's a class six road, right?
Private.
It's a private road, beginning with, so the, the problem was the town converting that private road into class five, would that have to be, right?
Well, it was discussed at town meeting last year, and it was a vote. And the vote came out fifteen-four and fifty-five against it, because of the cost associated with it.
Cost to do the road.
And you've got three quarters of a mile of road, you got out three.
And the fees landowners on both sides of that road, that, people own land on both sides of the road, which would mean they'd have to subdivide their properties, because now it's a town road running right through the middle of it. I mean, it opens up a can of worms and a big expense.
If you have to, I mean, it was brought up that, you know, that if you have to take the land by public domain, that you've got a lot of people lying there that are gonna, that are gonna, and I, I'll say right now, I live on the lake, so I'm not, I want that known upfront, but that that, you know, each one of those landowners can, can fight in court, and not only them, but their rebutters can also do that. So, in other words, to, the expense to do that, it's something that, that I certainly don't think the town can afford to do.
Right.
If you want, if you weren't at town meeting, I have that all on video, if you want to watch.
It was a good discussion.
I had, I had heard about a piece down off Camp Road, I didn't know if there was anything off of 109, or the other road that cuts in on the backside of it off of 109.
Well, it's the island off of Camp Road, you know, but it's an island, so I mean, and that's a little, that's a little preserved, right? So, I mean, I don't think you could do anything without it.
I loaned it down a little time, so I couldn't even, I don't even remember what it was like, it was a year ago.
So regarding our vision statement.
Back to that?
I know, Ed, you're not in favor of the way it's worded.
It's really just, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, you know, it's not a hill I feel like dying on, but...
Yes, but it represents what we are today.
Well, even that line below the statement is, is actually better than the statement itself.
Right.
Which line below?
"Citizens of Brookfield want to promote a sense of community and maintain this small-town atmosphere, protect the town's natural resources, while maintaining the town's economic and fiscal viability." I mean, that's even better than the vision statement, I think.
It is. What was the edit on the mission statement?
I'm sorry, what?
What was the edit on the mission statement that you came up with?
The vision statement?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was eliminate farming altogether, so it said, "A small, historic, rural New Hampshire community committed to maintaining the quality of life for present and future generations." That's what we changed it to, well, that's what I gave corrections, and I don't remember the exact conversation we had, but that's what I ended up with.
So did you change improving to maintaining?
Yes. Because we have a quality of life now, we want to try to keep it. You can't get much better than what we already got, yeah?
Right, and the second statement, the following, that's not part of it?
Well, it's not capitalized in bold, so it's not really part of the statement, I mean, it's just another line.
It's just hanging there?
It's like an additional explanation of the sentence above it.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Well, I think maybe that, I like Terry's idea there, maybe that should be our vision statement. Can I put on the nail on the coffin of the vision statement?
Go for it.
"Improving the quality of life for present and future generations." I've, I've lived in this town since nineteen eighty-two, essentially, and at that point, the selectmen encouraged people to not have children. I've heard from people since then that have had the same discussion with the selectmen, and to this day, I believe it's the case that most people in the town, whether it be the selectmen or other people, kind of discouraged the idea of having children in this town. So, leaving that future generations part in the missions, uh, vision statement, that seems kind of counterproductive to the way, the feeling I've had in this town, my life. And I do agree that the, the paragraph below it is much more fitting. Yes. I think, I think that makes good sense, Terry, was, what do you think? Yeah? So I think we'll get rid of our bold section and make the paragraph below our vision statement. Here along the line, yeah. So regarding section C, I mean, they're just generalities, like that would apply to any town. One through four. Land use. I think in section seven, "Transportation, encourage, goes to provide, provide efficient use, maintenance of roads that will be met to the maximum extent possible." "Provide transportation system that facilitate the safe movement of people, goods, and services."
Is that transportation?
That is transportation.
Sorry. Tied into Stratton Regional Planning's desire to send buses up here? And to bring six hundred people down to Rochester or something? Aren't they, they were pushing that, recall?
You're talking about the coast bus system?
Coast bus system, yes. Is, is transportation in this, that was written by them, is that referred, my question is, is that referring to a bus system?
No, I think it's talking about the, the network of roads, not necessarily of needs. It says "Provide a transportation system that will facilitate the safe movement of people, goods, and services."
Oh, a road system.
Right, that's what, that's what I agreed to, that's a road system.
So it's right there. Transportation out.
Provide a road system.
Well, just put down, "Provide roads." Leave out system and just provide roads, I mean...
That simplifies it.
I see what you mean about transportation, just the, just your, that was a transportation system.
Provide a road system, the heating system. That will facilitate the safe movement of people, goods.
Look like a law firm, yeah.
I mean, do we need it at all? I mean, doesn't A cover that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Doesn't A cover this?
Well, it needs to, you can keep it...
Well, it's under the, it's under the heading of transportation, so why do you have to refer to transportation system, I mean...
That's what I mean.
So it is.
Yeah, it says "Encourage a transportation system that will facilitate the safe movement." What are you facilitating? I don't like it.
Yeah, get rid of it.
Yeah.
Provide roads.
Encourage the efficient use and maintenance of roads that will meet, to the maximum extent possible, the transportation needs of rural residents. Not overburdening the town with excessive road maintenance costs. See, that sounds like what was written here.
So we get rid of B, then, all the other?
E goes, that's what I put to. Yes, agreed. Uh, "Community facilities, any sure and adequate level of community facilities and services that meet current, future needs and consideration for the cost of providing facilities and services for a small population. By all circumstances, quality town services and facilities in manner that respects the town's limited tax fees and underdog character, to the extent allowed by state law of persons, initiating development, provide for the impact of the development's cost."
And, under A, we get, we get changed to maintain a level of community facilities, instead of a sure and adequate level, just maintain. We have an adequate level now, I mean, the road hasn't done anything, sees less, less people now than always when this was written.
They were doing it for a bargain.
Yes. Maintain a level of community facilities and services that meet current. Okay. Anything with D?
I didn't have any changes, but...
Move on to nine, it's gonna be the hot topic.
And nine, yeah, well, instead of services and facilities, all I wrote in here, or had written in here, was opportunities. "Provide residents with a reasonable level of recreational opportunities." So that takes care of the Wolfboro and the...
Right, we do that.
And Wakefield, and wherever else the kids can go if they want.
We subscribe to...
Just provide the opportunities, which we do, right?
We subscribe to Wolfboro Recreation and Gafford Library.
So that means advance services and facilities, right? Maybe get rid of those.
Yeah, services and facilities, scratching, putting in opportunities.
Yes. "Provide residents with a reasonable level of recreational opportunities in a manner that's consistent with the town's small population and limited tax base."
Period.
Period, yeah, I think I think such as "Provide a town access Kingswood Lake" is taken out.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta go back to B for "Community facilities."
Yes.
It says, I don't know if you already took it out, where it's talking about the capital improvement program and impact fee ordinance? Where did that come from? And I thought we don't have a capital improvement program.
That's what you already mentioned to me earlier, right?
The town voted to have the selectmen put together a maintenance plan and not have a formal C I P from the planning board.
So that whole sentence goes away then? But to the extent allowed by the law, this person was initiating development, yeah?
Now, what's a, what's an impact fee ordinance?
You wanna put a subdivision in, there's an impact on services, you charge a thousand dollars on that.
Impact fee. Okay. We're taking that out.
That whole line?
Yes.
So it's left to B, is that for a sentence?
Yes.
You know, this sounds like an update, what we're doing now.
It does.
Finally. Sounds like an update.
Okay, I'm glad you're happy.
And we're making it shorter.
So on recreation, we've discussed...
Taking out Kingswood Lake thing?
Yes, where we are thoughts on that.
And services and facilities, scratching both of those.
Yes.
And putting in opportunities instead.
Under tax base, period, rather than colon, such a colon such as "Provide a town access Kingswood Lake," that's gone. Number 10, housing, allow, allow for modest growth in this housing stock and its fair share of regional affordable housing need in a manner compatible with the town's rural character. I think that goes in with our discussions we've had tonight, so...
I have some changes there, if you wanna hear them.
I'd love to hear it.
Under 10. Uh, "Scratch meat." And "Scratch fair share of the." So it ends up reading, "Allow for modest growth in housing stock and its regional affordable housing need to a manner compatible with the town's rural character."
Question, are the regional affordable housing need, what does that mean in your mind? The regional affordable housing need, is that the, the workforce housing overlay or something, is that what that's referring to?
It could be. It, it sounds like too much talk on it.
Yeah.
Just all that.
Would I be there on this?
Then you can eliminate all that too, and just go, "Allow modest growth in housing stock in a manner compatible with the town's rural character."
Yeah, that sounds perfect.
Maybe the population.
I don't have a rural population. I didn't like the word in number five, I'll call back, sorry.
Yeah.
Where it says growth management. What the heck is that?
Well, that, that kind of goes in the housing, right?
That's saying directly, "You and delegate property acquisition."
What?
It's not letting people have babies. It's growth management, isn't it?
Well, that could potentially...
Smoking, smoking is growth management.
That's just a heading or a title. Can we get rid of growth management and just have it promote growth consistent with Brookfield's municipal resources? Are promoting the land use pattern that encourages the protection... Are promoting a land use pattern that encourages the protection of rural areas?
Does that repeat, is it repeated in the next section six?
One minute.
Oh, back up top again?
Well, Ed, Ed moves backwards, meaning forward, so we broke backwards.
Okay.
One minute, no, we have, we have eleven. Good.
No, we didn't.
You're watching your clock?
I am. I'm a watcher here.
Watching that one.
All right. Now, a couple minutes back.
Show me.
All right. So quickly, do we want to eliminate growth management because it seems to be incorporated into the language?
In number six, land use.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So eliminate five altogether?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
All right, so let's wrap this up. So this, I have our edits here, of which we'll, uh, I can type up and we can, uh, start formatting for the, for the final review. So we'll call this complete for now. We have section D, which is our master plan map, and our overlays here, which we'll have to go, we'll have to get from SRPC.
Suggestion. As you go through these pages and they get marked up and you print out one, a way to change it, just kind of code it on top of working documents and as we get them, we'll fill the new book.
Yes. Good, I'm with you. All right, so at the next meeting, we'll have this typed up and...
All of two books.
And we'll, uh, distribute it to the, the board members. Close it. So that's what we updated. Next month, we'll look at two point oh two, which I believe is natural resources, so...
Conservation and recreation policies.
Yes, so we'll get the conservation commission, I'll send out an email to them, inviting them to participate.
I thought we were gonna let them do it altogether. I didn't know what they did, lead to conservation commission, we thought we were gonna let them do it.
No, we're, we're, we're a team here, we're gonna do it all together.
That's right.
I mean, statutorily, it's our responsibility, is it correct?
Yes, it is, but we're, uh...
I'm saying it should be where they're invited and then we can get a discussion.
Yes. So that will be the next meeting.
And the, the time when it's under discussion creates a sense of urgency in the group to get to the point.
Yes.
And then, um, just impacts and sort of, sort of more productive, but that works.
Good.
Yeah, we came up with that.
Pretty good.
All right, uh, we've number comments and then we'll adjourn, so start around the room, John, do you have any?
I don't.
No? Rick?
Very productive, very effective.
Good.
The only member comment I have is the gravel pit inspection permission letters have been sent, so we just have to reform and show. And then as soon as they do, we can go out and, is that what we, we were assigned to do?
Yes, and, uh, we got a different training to recruit, to go with.
Good.
Yeah, that's right, we'll be knowing this.
Now, other than what I commented, I don't, I mean, I think, I think we would, you know, speak to Dr. Maybe, that's my first one, so. And doing it at a reasonable amount of times is a good thing.
Yes, yes.
Terry?
Basically, I was building on classic road, um, on back to thinking about that and, um, probably coming up with examples of it being done in the past, but the, might be a good way to...
Yeah.
Start that for the night. Uh, you know, Tumble Down Dick Road was class six.
Yeah.
And I built a house on it.
Yeah.
But I got two hundred and sixty feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And that was nineteen ninety-seven.
Yeah. Do you have documentation from back in that time when you were trying to figure out the process that you can share?
I, probably just the building permit that I got from Stilwittamore, uh, but even my neighbor was plowing roads, because the town didn't maintain it.
Yeah.
And they allowed me to get a building permit, so.
Just explain where your frontage is, is it on the road?
It's on the Dick Road, yes.
You have two hundred and something feet of frontage on the Dick Road?
Yeah.
Okay. You got any frontage on the lake?
I do.
And that's, that's what gets the permits on the lake. Lake frontage, not road frontage. You're fortunate to have two hundred and sixty on stop as well.
So it's a matter of revenue for the town, is what it is, you know?
Right, right, but it's...
Yes, just a second. Two comments.
Okay.
In, in the zoning, it talks about two hundred and fifty feet by the town road. Do we mean continuous two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty feet continuous, or does it mean something else? Like, my lawyer had it.
Generally speaking, it means two hundred and fifty feet along a road.
Doesn't say continuous. There's a difference. We got examples. The other one, when you talk about these class six roads, you gotta make a decision early, I think. Are you talking specifically this road, or are you talking all class, class six roads in town? You gotta decide, I think, early how you're gonna handle it.
Yes.
Also, too, this is Zach's point, I know of one lot in town, that's a very big lot, and its frontage consists of three places. That's on two, two sixty, and that, that flies beyond your zoning right now because it doesn't say continuous. I think that drives the point.
Okay. I haven't moved it yet. Well, I would just like to close by saying, um, thank you for the new members, for John being here again, for Peter joining us.
Good to be here.
It's great to have, uh, some new faces and, and, uh, new interest in the group. And, uh, look forward to August meeting, return eight fifteen.